Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 9th, 2021 work session of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If you all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Behring, any need for any changes?
No recommended changes.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
By Darla, all in favor. That's unanimous. First up for presentation and discussion, we have Dr. Gary Davison for the Lambert Hybrid Academy.
2020 has caused us to be really good at succeeding in being reactionary. This whole situation right now, we're reacting to something that we did not cause. Moving forward, the Lambert High School community has sought to ask us to be responsive. What you're going to hear today is us being responsive to the changing needs of our community. Ashley.
Currently, 57% of Lambert High School students have a line of enrollment with Forsyth Virtual Academy. And that's not including the number of students who are taking Georgia Virtual classes as a part of their school day. So resoundingly, what we're hearing from our community, even amidst this current crisis, is that online learning is a vital part of how they're going to access curriculum. When we had to close school back in the fall, one of the things that we had was an opportunity to reflect on how we delivered that online learning to our students. And we were able and fortunate in that process to design a way of educating our students where our teachers were available to them in a synchronous time, but they were safe at home. And also, they were able to continue those relationships that they had developed through face-to-face working with our staff on campus. So when we started to get feedback from our community about the closure, we resoundingly heard from our families and from our staff that one of the things that was most vital is the relationship component of the learning, which was fostered because the teachers were available to students and the students were able to connect with their teachers even though they weren't on campus. In addition to that, the reasons that our families are so important and critical about how we design learning is because they want to be here in Forsyth County schools. And they want to have those connections with our Forsyth County teachers. So we started to think, how can we make the best of our hybrid and our face-to-face, our virtual, full-time asynchronous learning and our face-to-face synchronous learning, and then help our students to develop a skill set that's going to impact them as they move into the future of what they're going to need in either the workforce or in post-secondary yet?
So we brought together a team of teachers, a design team, if you will, to kind of be a think tank for us about what was needed, how best we could respond to that need in the virtual learning setting. And as Dr. Donna C. indicated, overwhelmingly, what we heard was they needed that social connection piece. Although they were successful in virtual learning, or they were successful face-to-face, what they really wanted was something somewhere in between. So we came up with the idea of the Hybrid Academy. And it's a responsive model for tomorrow's learners. What you'll see as we continue to present is that there's a lot more flexibility in this model, and it's personalized, that learners can personalize what they take, how they take, and how they respond in that educational setting.
Thank you. Currently, our kids are very successful face-to-face in all of our Forsyth County schools. And that looks like at the high school level, and I want to put an asterisk in this, that we're seeking to go back to our normal schedule next year, a straight eight like we've had in past years. What that looks like in the face-to-face model is that students will come on campus Monday, Tuesday, and Friday and take their normal schedule. Wednesday and Thursday are our block days. And that's been our traditional schedule that we've had for a number of years. The face-to-face model, we're doing very, very well with. Fast forward to our fully virtual model, which is what we've been doing with kids for a number of years, with Forsyth Virtual, GAVs, we've had a number of students that have been very successful there. And we currently have a large number of students residing there. Currently, we have students in the hybrid model. And the current hybrid model, we're in a block schedule, but what they do is they come on campus for some classes face-to-face, and then they go home and take asynchronous classes, not face-to-face, and they're in that virtual world, and it is asynchronous. Hearing and being responsive to our community, we think we're going to be able to take our teachers and blend the two together to make a synchronous opportunity for kids to come onto our campus Monday, Tuesday, I'm sorry, Monday, Tuesday, and Friday, their hybrid courses would be synchronous virtual courses. Wednesday and Thursday, their block classes will be face-to-face, have those extended times for learning opportunities, labs, all of the other creative things that they want to be able to do, take that face-to-face. Friday will be a day where we'll have a lot of catch-up remediation, enrichment, a lot of that catch-up time. The synchronous opportunity on Monday, Tuesday, and Friday will be a mini lesson that the teachers will create and have, and then have some feedback-forward opportunities that we're looking at within that synchronous time. We know that there'll be some students that won't be able to travel back and forth. We've got that covered. We've got a learning laboratory at school that will be able to have them take their virtual courses onsite synchronously, and then be able to leave from that and go to their face-to-face course. So we feel like we're actually capitalizing on the relationship that students are seeking, the relationship that staff is seeking, as well as being able to bring in enrichment and student support at the level that Forsyth County Schools has been providing for many years. Again, taking the very best of what we do face-to-face, bringing it into the flexibility that the virtual world provides. And we're going to be able to capture that with our own staff onsite. And we feel like it's going to be completely budget-neutral and be able to do this onsite, providing that personalized, flexible opportunity that all of our parents are going to want. Again, being responsive after learning how to be very good at being reactionary.
So I spoke earlier about personalization. And really, what's lovely about this model is a student gets to make the choice, where do they need that face-to-face instruction all week long? Where do they want a hybrid model? So for example, if you have a student who is very talented in math, they may not need as much direct instruction and support as another student might. What's wonderful about this is you could have that student who's very good at math, who needs to come in once a week for support or enrichment or application of that knowledge that they pick up. Or you could also have this student who maybe struggles a little bit in math, can get the basic concepts, but needs that support piece when they come in on those block days. So what's wonderful for the teachers as well is on that hybrid course day where they come in face-to-face, a teacher can really differentiate, which is something we've always struggled with in high school, how they present the learning. One group of students may be working on an application project and digging deeper, while another group of students could have direct support from the teacher or possibly even peers in that setting. So it's very flexible in what these children get to choose as what they're going to take as a hybrid class, what they're going to take face-to-face, and how they actually engage in the material. So it's really moving things forward from taking what kids access knowledge very easily across the district. They know how to do that. If you have kids, you know they do that very, very well. Now, we're going to see what can we do on those block days to get them to engage with that material and move kind of to the next level.
So you've heard us speak of the design team that we pulled together. We have a very talented group of committed teachers who are both living in the virtual world and who are obviously our greatest assets in our face-to-face building world. But one of the things we challenge them with is to look back at the learner profile. And we wanted them to go back to that core value of what we know is expected amongst all of our schools and what we really hope to provide for all of our learners. We asked them, look through it with a different lens and say, how is the hybrid model responding to the learner profile challenge? And it was a really great conversation. We've said multiple times today, we really wish that we could have just like brought you into the conversation because they're so on fire for this idea on how to reengage our kids, reconnect with our community. And what they said to us was, the learner profile is what we're hoping to realign to. Not that we have lost the learner profile, but because we have lost some contact with our students due to the virtual world, this is a way to kind of reach your arms back around and grab those kids and bring them in, and then reengage them in those goals and values that we know are important to them and important to our community as we continue to provide that Forsyth County level of expectation. So they were very excited to say, they think this is how we recommit our students and our faculty back to the learner profile, where our students are really getting that rich experience that we hope we're creating.
Again, we've become very successful at being reactionary. We hope to be more successful at being responsive. And we think that we've learned from this year. Certainly, when we closed in October for that two-week period, we learned a lot. We went back and analyzed and debriefed, and we feel like we've put together a 50,000-foot view of what we're looking to do. And again, the design team has done an excellent job of starting to put details underneath all of that in how can education look in the future? I personally think it's going to change in the future. The mode of education will change. School choice will be here one day. I want us to be a destination rather than ascending location. And we think that by being responsive to our community, we're going to be able to be that. Thank you very much.
Board members have any questions? I'll just make a comment first. Obviously, I'm really excited about this. You know, this is very proactive, very creative, to the point that Dr. Davison is making. You know, we've learned a lot over the last year being out because of COVID. And you know, challenges create opportunities. And from what we've learned, we've created an opportunity now to maybe look at education all differently. I know that resonates with Mr. Cleveland. We've talked about this a lot. And we've said over the years, school doesn't have to be an eight-to-three experience for every child, nor does it need to be a face-to-face experience every single day for every single child. And I like the thoughts of putting something together that really provides customer service to our families, flexibility for our families, choices for our families, and us adapting to their needs instead of the way school used to be, we just put together a schedule and we pigeonhole everybody in. We're not doing that anymore. It creates more work for us. It's more challenging for us to put a schedule together like this, but it's absolutely the right thing to do for our students. And I just applaud Lambert for willing to pilot this for us. This is not something, as a board, you have to approve. It's not something you vote on. As you know, in our system, we give our leadership at our schools a lot of flexibility, a lot of autonomy to meet the attributes of the learner profile, which is exactly what the Lambert staff has done. But I wanted you to hear about it because it's going to be talked about in our community and make sure you have an opportunity to ask any questions of our leadership team. So with that, do you have any questions or comments for them?
Yeah, for me, I mean, this is a great step toward what we're doing and trying to really embrace it. For me, virtual learning is something that's been around for a while. Corporate America's been trying and trying to figure it out. But I think I've finally come to a conclusion that it's really about individualized learning. You're given the choice to that student how they're going to learn this through these virtual sessions, and how they'll recover their credits, if they don't understand it, how they figure it out back to the critical thinking in the learner profile. How do they do that? So for me, you know, and we talk socially about YouTube and other things, and people are putting all kind of great content out there, little bitty learning snippets is what I call them. And so I'm able to get out there, and if I don't quite get what they're saying, I can ask questions in that video and get a response, you know, offline. And it's all virtual. So that way of learning works for me as a person, and that's my individual style. And so I think it's a great thing. One thing I will challenge you, as you move into the virtual world, and it's something Dr. Behring and I've talked about, is we talk about money and how we spend our money. You know, we don't want to spend our money on desks in a line pointing to the front of the room that we grew up with. So look at what you need more. What is that? What is it different to do virtual education? I know studios come into mind, you know, lighting, the other things. How do I convey a board to a student virtually? So those kind of things. Think about those things that we don't have in our infrastructure today that we might want to start looking at.
Absolutely.
To deliver that. So that's my comments.
I want to applaud you. I know this year, we had to pivot quickly and then do what we had to do. And I just applaud that you, as you were doing all that, started to look ahead to what we could do better this year. Because we heard from parents and students that they wanted that synchronous environment. So, and especially, they want, doing it this way, having students be able to virtual right at Lambert, that's going to be a more direct connection to their teachers, which is something that we've heard as well. So I like that. But I also know from talking a little earlier, this is going to be an individual choice. I think kids are going to have to work with their counselors, they're going to work with their parents and figure out what model and choice is going to be good for them. But there's still going to be, this might not be exactly for everyone. There's still going to be the traditional school model for a student that just wants to go to school every day.
Correct.
And do the traditional way. So it's going to be, each child's going to have to figure out what's going to be best for them. So you'll still have that old-fashioned model, so to speak.
Absolutely. It literally could be from 25 kids to 1,000. And again, it's based upon their choice. Again, it goes back to personalized instruction. How are we going to meet their needs personally in doing that? We feel like we have the staff that can do that internally to be able to do it. We're going to stub our toes. I know that's going to happen. We know that. But we feel like we have a design team that's going to be able to work through that. This year was a year of stubbing toes, if we've ever had it. I mean, and we've learned how to do it, and our toes are really calloused right now. So we feel like this is the best time to really try something new like this to meet our students' needs. So thank you.
Applaud you for all the work.
I think we have the right team doing it. Thank you. Thanks for doing that. We're excited, and hopefully you can bring back some feedback, you know, and let us know how things are going, because this is really the future of education.
I would really like to bring some students back.
Yeah, let's do it.
Because I'd really like to get their perspective on it, so you could hear.
The only other thing I would add, you know, and I agree, we got a lot of feedback about students and parents desiring more synchronous instruction virtually, and we get that. But there's also a demand in our community still for asynchronous instruction, and that vehicle will still be there through Forsyth Virtual Academy. There are for some children, some families, that model works really well, but it's not for everybody. And again, it's about providing a menu of opportunities. And when we look at the school system with a graduation rate of 96%, and an individual school that's hovered 98, 99% over the years, you know, how do you improve upon that? And to me, the one way you improve upon that is exactly this. You look to personalize and individualize instruction for every child so they all find their niche. That's the way you inch up those graduation rates. So again, kudos to Lambert. Great job, guys.
We want to thank you all for allowing us to be able to do that, to try some new strategies and things, to really try to bring it to the next level. So thank you all very much for that.
That's what it's all about.
And what Tom said about technology or whatever, think about ahead what that means that you might be needing.
Absolutely.
Because we need to know that.
Thank you.
Great stuff, guys. Thanks.
Thank you so much. All right, next, we have construction update with Mr. Tom Lanning.
I'll give you the best of both there with the bricks and mortar to match the virtual. So seriously, we're excited, East Forsyth High School, to have set the ribbon cutting now for July 17th. As you'll see in the photos, we're extremely well positioned for that. Again, a 90-acre site, so the only remaining landscaping is in this area, and we're finishing out the striping of the pavement and lots. This is the back view of the property. We have six tennis courts, three areas, two courts each, and the practice field. Given the land constraints, you know, this is a little different than Denmark. We've got the grass field. But this measures 350 by 240 lineal feet, so very significant turf field. Now that we finally got a break in the weather, we are topping all of those athletic surfaces. I skipped it over, but you see the building envelope is complete. Another side view, a little more of the property developed. Very exciting, we've got the football done. And, you know, not only physically to have that done, but in getting with Jeff Chaney and Matt Hollis, Athletic Director, we're ready for May football. So, you know, we're extremely sensitive to community, student athletes, starting the school spirit even before academics begin. So we have 10 different buildings on this campus, so we have 10 different building permits. There's 31 inspections required for each building. So a long way of saying, you know, out of the 90 acres, 450,000 square feet, the final inspections are well underway, depending on which building element you're at. But the athletic storage starts taking place April 1st to be ready for the student athletes coming May 1st, plus minus. And with that, you know, much of the FFNE is already coordinated beyond construction, getting with Steve Langston, Brad Richardson, Jeff Chaney, such that the furniture flow, followed by security cameras, access controls, information technology, CTAE, all of that is being proactively planned for seamless transition. And probably important to add, given the complexity of the high school, you know, fortunately, that's where we're starting with. ACE follows with all those same elements and processes, and then we'll be doing that with Hendrix. So a couple of the quick interior shots, the performing arts, or not performing arts, but auditorium is coming together. This is the media center. Gymnasium, the bleachers are now installed. That's what you see down on the floor a week ago, and for the most part, we're well underway with installation of that gymnasium. Typical hallway. The grand hallway, just put that in a little bit different aesthetically with what we're doing. From a technical perspective, really pleased with the width that we've added for student flow, a nice design feature. So that was east. So then moving to ACE, as I said, all of those same processes will happen with certificate of occupancy in April, followed by all of the FFNE and other elements that have to occur for the building. We'll be finishing out the landscaping this month. You see the building envelope is substantially complete. And a couple interior shots. This was taken, you know, just a couple days ago, because we need to give this to you Thursday. And if you go out there today, it's all carpeted, the LVT flooring is in, the ceiling tile is in. Wish I could give you a real-time photo, but just to give you a feel for the speed of how we're progressing, a typical classroom. You see we're ready. A little bit different, we're doing the polished concrete in the floors. So we are well positioned on ACE with projected certificate of occupancy in April. Performing Arts Center. That work is so much more complicated, both from a technical perspective, the complication of it. So, you know, remember, this turns over, opens in late fall, unlike the other April certificates of occupancy. It moves a little slower, given that complexity, as you can see with some of the detail even on the exterior wall, and certainly the interior rigging, the staging, all of what's got to go into that. And priority being right now, opening obviously of East ACE, Hendrix. And immediately after that, we'll show you the interior shots of Focal coming together. Similarly, on Hendrix, you see the building envelope complete. Most importantly, we got the playing field in. That's always important to us, given the rooting of the turf, to give it extra months before the student athletes get on it for safety. But the landscaping, obviously, a little challenged with the weather we've been having, but over the next two months, we'll finish the landscaping. And some interior shots, you see, and again, I don't want to show you the classrooms over and over again, but for the most part, the classrooms are well underway. Basketball's always a little different, or I should say, the gymnasium. Interior hallway, the administration area. And we're set for July 24th ribbon cuttings for Hendrix and ACE. So that leaves us then with New Hope Elementary School. Always tough for an aerial to show you. If you remember, we had a 70-foot difference from the high side to the low side here. Now we've got a seven-foot difference. So all that cut-and-fill has transpired. This gray area that you see, that's always, as you've heard me say before, that's the challenge, rock, dynamite, blast areas. Working through those challenges, this is where the foundation wall exists, separating the higher portion of the level of New Hope and then the two-story lower level. But we're well underway, and steel, again, we've got to get the foundations in during February to be ready for mid-March steel, which is both happening behind the scenes, all that engineering. Not a real photogenic shot, so that's the foundation wall. Which then brings us to the remaining projects, really in the capital program, as well as, you know, what we're going to be doing the balance of the year. So for the South Forsyth Turf Maintenance Building, we'll be recommending the GC to you in the next formal board meeting next Tuesday. Hill Center Office renovations, along with 1130, 1140, had the pre-proposal conference today. The RFP is due later in February, and we'll be bringing that recommendation to you in the March board meeting. And then you see the various five CTAE projects. Because they're more of a simpler-type delivery, that is a lump sum, so low bid, responsive bidder wins, as opposed to the best value qualifications for some of them are complicated. Any questions on the program?
I just want to say thank you to you and to Mr. Warwick also, because we continue to get, being a good neighbor, talking with people in the community, especially over in Hendrix, and very responsive. Matt does a great job, and you do a great job being a good neighbor through this process. So we continue to address their concerns and help them out and talk with them. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. It's hard to believe that east is, like, in a couple months, going to have sports going on there.
Yeah, that's fun.
Darla, you excited? That's great news. All right, thank you. Next, we have the financial update with Larry Hamel and Mark. Matt, you're coming up too?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, that's the good stuff, yeah.
Always, Matt, always.
No offense, but Larry knows his stuff.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that. So tonight, we're going to talk to you about the bond payment schedule and the SPOS IV project schedules. Just to kind of set the bond payment schedule up, just kind of give you a broad view of what we're looking at going forward, is right now, we are planning SPOS VI, no new bonds being issued. And that'll be the first time, I believe, since the '90s, when we started this process. Under this program that we're looking at now, payment-wise, the last payment would be 2038. That would be in February. The amount of money we will collect, right now, we are putting a constant 4% growth every year into projections, and that's how we came up with these numbers. The millage rate still is at 2.418 mills. As we go along and we don't issue any more bonds, that number can eventually drop towards the end of the 2038 cycle. One thing about SPOS VI, when SPOS VI is approved, there is about $48.6 million we have to invest towards bond payments. And that's because at the current debt millage rate of 2.4, there won't be enough money collected unless SPOS VI contributes some money towards it to make sure all the payments are paid on time. And those payments will be in the physical year '24, '25, and '26, broken out, not quite evenly, and you'll see that in a minute. The last SPOS V bond payment that was part of our referendum is scheduled to be paid off in '23 physical year. And then the last thing is, is we make bi-annually payments, that's both in February 1st and August 1st.
Just to step back a second, Larry. So we're currently in SPOS V, which is a five-year cycle, and that ends on July 1 of 2022.
It's supposed to end June 30th of next year.
Next year.
But we are ahead of collections. FYI, we'll present this information to you next week, but December, we broke a record. We collected over $5 million in SPOS funds. This time last year for December, I mean, excuse me, for January last year, we only collected $4 million. We're up $1 million. That's really putting us ahead of the schedule. Right now, we are going to hit the 195 limit that was in the referendum for SPOS V, a quarter early. So it's important we get SPOS VI passed so that we can start that process immediately, starting right after SPOS V is done.
All right. Thank you. And you said the 48 for the SPOS VI will be required to make minimum debt service payment? You're going to have to invest that? Is that what you'd say?
So of whatever number we come up with that we say SPOS VI is going to generate, 48.6 of that $1 million has to be used to make bond payments during the '24, '25, and '26 years, so that we don't have to increase the millage rate for debt service.
Gotcha. Okay.
Any other questions?
This is very helpful.
Okay. So what we're looking at now, and we try to put this in the easiest format to follow, to an accountant that makes, this looks easy for me, I don't know for everybody else, but.
This is the kind I like.
All right. All right. So, if you look to your, you look in the first column, typically, that is what we are planning, projected to pay with the debt millage collected, starting with the next payment in '22, all the way through '38. The next column in yellow is the remaining SPOS V payment scheduled to be made with the SPOS V funds. And then, in the last column there, SPOS VI, those are the amount of money we plan to play with SPOS VI, if, when SPOS VI is approved, to help support the debt millage. And that's the only amount of money we have to pay for those three years. So, you know, based on the COCs we had back in January, we still think the amount of money we're going to collect will be okay for any funds that we need to have upfront, for any kind of large projects we have talked about. And then we will probably be back ending, starting in '26, a large portion of whatever the cap is we come up with for the SPOS VI projects we decide to come up with.
So, this basically says the debt service will cover all of the existing bond that we have left?
Yes.
As long as, with the addition of the remaining projected SPOS V funds and the assuming SPOS VI pass, that initial...
Right. Worst-case scenario, if SPOS VI does not pass, and we have to wait a year, we might have to increase the millage rate a tiny bit, just to collect enough money to make the next couple of payments. But that can be adjusted year to year.
That, and that's a great point, and that'll be part of our messaging to our community, because we don't have any choice, we have to pay down our debt. You don't have a choice on that.
It's there, it's right there.
Correct. And the best way to do that is through SPOS. And so, that's why we need to be really clear about, we'll be using about 40, nearly $49 million of the new SPOS to pay down debt. The rest of it will...
The burden of the paying down the debt from the homeowners and the landowners to the people buying stuff.
Correct. And then the balance of whatever we ask the citizens to approve, we'll use for life-cycle projects and things like that, which we have a laundry list of needs, as you well know.
And we're not adding to the debt.
We're not adding to the debt.
Well, and that's like, that's to me, the biggest point. If you look at, when you look at the debt service, it pays down at the bottom, principal and interest. And that's, when you do SPOS payments, and if we, as Larry mentioned earlier, this would include no more bonds during that time period.
Right.
So, when you, when we do maintenance projects, and whether it's building things or fixing things, it's not principal and interest.
Correct.
It's just principal, essentially.
Paying cash.
You're just paying cash.
Correct.
You're not paying interest.
Cash basis only, yes.
And you can see what a huge, if you're paying as you go, which is what SPOS is, it's a huge savings, long-term.
Right. So, if you look at the bottom, you can see the breakdown between principal and interest. And so, the, between what debt service, SPOS V and SPOS VI will pay, the total amount of money that we will pay between now and the end of '38 is $720 million.
Yeah, and $221 million of that is interest.
Correct.
So, to Kristen's point, you use SPOS, and you have no interest, you're just paying cash.
Yeah.
Huge.
It's huge.
Now, I won't be here around '38, probably, just to warn you ahead of time, but if that does happen, and this works out the way we planned it to work, you will be debt-free, and then the millage cost will go away. And by then, when you start hitting the years '35, '36, '37, '38, we're talking that the millage rate could be as low as 1 mil at that point. Because you have so much money to collect.
The debt service millage.
The debt service.
For the debt service millage, I apologize.
Still going to pay the employees. Well, that's just...
It could be as low as, it could be as low as 1 mil.
I probably won't be here either, but I did want to, I wanted to make that clear. Yes, yes.
Okay. This is a good visual.
Yeah, this is a great one, yeah.
And this isn't something new. This is something we've been working for the whole time I've been on the board, you know, seeing this changeover to where the money coming in is coming from our sales tax and things that...
Yeah, and you, as a board, did what you had to do. I mean, you, your growth was exploding here, and you had to build new schools, and the only way you could do it was to issue bonds. Now that we've kind of caught up, we're in a position now where we probably aren't going to have to issue bonds for the foreseeable future. And that's, that's a good thing, because you, then you get out of paying interest.
And we can do maintenance as we go, which is really shifting to the maintenance model is something...
I'll stand up here just in case Matt needs my help.
Oh, okay.
I'll move to phase two of the presentation, and that is to justify to your taxpayers that, hey, look, the money is going back into the schools, and this is very impressive. If you look at over a five-year period, when I came aboard, there was a packet given to me that this had to be done, and this is what the money's going back into, and it's very important. We had, and I don't want to go over every slide with you, hopefully, this is self-explanatory. The three categories that I put things in was closed. What closed means is, we have made our final payment on that project. Because you're going to see some things, moving into the second category of in-progress, and you're thinking, well, I thought that was done. Case in point, Pools Mill. We have not officially paid the final payment to our contractors, because we have some warranty issues and things of that nature that we're working through, and we're always very vigilant about not making that final payment to make sure we are 100% satisfied with that project. And then not-started means I am not currently under a contract with any general contractor to do this work. However, as you saw, you know, some of these are coming to you starting next month. We're going to be pushing a lot of these forward. Because my goal is to have pretty much 99% of these things, other than New Hope and a couple asphalt, done by the end of this summer. Because I think that's critical, that I'm pushing very hard. My team is working very difficult, you know, they always push me that I'm being hard on them, but I think it's important for our kids and our teachers to get these things done. So, just real quick, in summary, if you go to the end, the last page, and again, if you want me to touch on each of these, I will, but of the 88 total projects, we have fully completed 61 that is closed out. We have 12 in-progress, which, you know, could mean multiple things, they're currently under construction, or we just haven't paid that final payment. We have 15 that are, were not under construction. So, of a $300 million roughly program, yes, that $36 million, you're thinking, wait a minute, we haven't closed out that many. Understand, six projects alone, in this platform, accounts for $254 million. PAC ACE, East, Hendrix, Pools Mill, those are big-ticket items that, you'll see that number go up very quickly. We expect to close out Pools Mill by the summer, so that's a $27 million ticket that will be officially spent. You know, East alone is 96, Hendrix 38, so again, there, and then also, New Hope is another 33. So, the big-ticket items have not actually completely panned out, so we want to be careful, I don't ever close those out, because you never know. He gets upset about it, because he wants to know where we are financially, but at the same time, so many things can happen in large-ticket item projects, that we're very cautious about pushing forward. With that, the in-progress, as you can see, 258 million, and then the not-started is $5 million, that equals our total program. As an update to you, right now, as projection, we are staying on budget, if not a little bit below. But again, I don't, I'm hesitant to say that, because he wants to grab it. So, we are staying on budget. Some things are coming in over, but other things have come in under. So, right now, we're doing a great job with the taxpayers, the money, and we're doing well. Questions about specific projects?
This was one of those items, came from board members before our retreat, and we just couldn't cover everything in the retreat, and hopefully, this was what you were looking for, and just want to thank Larry and Matt for putting it together.
Great.
Very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You guys make a good duo.
Don't ask him the same.
All right. Next, we have policy IA IDE III update with Leigh Anne Rice.
And I have my friend Dawn with me in case I need help.
Everybody needs a friend.
I actually have two policy updates for you all to consider. The first one, IDE, has to do with the interscholastic athletics, and what we are recommending is one small change to our middle school section. Our county athletic director, Nathan Turner, had asked us to add a section that refers to the GHSA constitution and bylaws. Currently, with our 7th and 8th graders who are competing, we do follow GHSA, and he just wanted to make sure we have that in our policy, so that our current procedures align with policy. Any questions about that? The other policy update is policy IA that refers to our instructional program philosophy. When we went back through this, you'll see in yellow, these are all the things we added new. The former policy refers to things that are out of date, like No Child Left Behind, Georgia Single Statewide Accountability System. And so, we went through and updated with current, both state and federal technical terms, as well as updating our district, our core values, our learner profile, strategic plan. So, this is a policy that we very much did go through and strike through, all of the old information. You'll see that it references our strategic goals from 2010, and wanted to make sure that everything we have is very up-to-date. So, our recommendations for updating the policy, we'll go back and really look at the accountability for our district, so that we can ensure both student and staff success. And we tried to align that in a much simpler, clearer manner for you. So, you'll see a section on our core values, where we've aligned our vision, mission, beliefs, refer to the learner profile, as you heard Lambert refer to earlier, our strategic plan, the instructional framework, our continuous improvement process, how we evaluate personnel, and then finally, our accreditation.
Okay. And as always, this will sit on the table for 30 days, and we'll come back to vote for you, from you next month.
That'll be available for you, the website as well.
Yes, of course, right. Thank you, Leigh Anne.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have school calendar draft 2022, 2023 with Mr. Joey Perkel.
I didn't bring anybody with me. I don't have, I don't have anybody to bring.
I'm here for you, Joey.
Dr. Peterson's always here for that.
We need the doc.
Okay, so, I'm going to present to you the calendar draft for '22, '23, the student calendar draft, so I'll just give you a quick summary of that. It mirrors very much, almost identical to the current school calendar. I did receive input from local school councils regarding this original, or this draft. The feedback from the local school councils, the majority of the feedback was, they liked it. They said, we, we're, we are used to this calendar, the breaks are spread out, we think the breaks are good breaks for us, for our, for our children, for our families. So, overall, they, they really liked this, this calendar. So, anyway, just quickly run through a summary of it. There are six pre-planning days. The first day of school is on Thursday, August 4th. The week of fall break is the last week in September. There's a week of Thanksgiving for Thanksgiving holiday, as usual. 10 days for winter break, with two staff development days at the end for staff. This is where, this matches the revision that we made to the current calendar that we're in, and adding that additional day at the end, and so that, that matched that. Spring break is the first full week in April, the last day of school is May the 24th, and is an early release day. There's one post-planning day, five early release, there's five early release days. One of those is a K-12 professional development. Two is a K-8 parent conference. One is a K-12 parent conference, and one, which is the last day of school. There are five professional development days for staff, which are student holidays throughout the calendar. Those are complete staff development days. 88 days in the first semester, 90 days in the second, 178 total student days, and 190 total staff days, which Dr. Salome will come later, in a couple, three weeks, with the staff calendar she, she does those. So, just to remind you then, that in presenting this draft to you this afternoon, that will go on, be posted on the website beginning tomorrow, for community and external feedback. And so, that will be through March 1st. And then after March 1st, I'll compile the feedback, review it, look at it, make any changes if we feel there needs to be changes based on the feedback. And then I'll present that calendar then back to you at your meeting on March 9th, and then ask you for final approval at your regular meeting on March 16th.
Any questions or comments about the calendar? People are excited to have fall break, work out with football, to be later in September. I think that's been some positive feedback I've heard at the LLCs.
I'll tell you the other positive feedback, I'm sorry, Wes. The two days when we come back from winter break in January, in terms of scheduling, especially middle school and high school, that was very, very valuable. We have new students coming in in January, too, so it helps to get them into the schools and get familiar before school classes actually start back, so that was very well received.
And again, it's a consistent calendar that we've had, year after year now, and it's kind of a pride and true.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Perkel, and your imaginary friend.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any future agenda items they'd like to add?
No.
All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel, student educational records, and land?
So moved.
Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved. Second.
That's unanimous. Is there a motion to approve personnel items A, 1 to 7, B, 1 to 13, and C, 1 to 22?
So moved.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
By Wes, all in favor. That is unanimous. Is there a motion to approve student out-of-district appeals, 429 to 436, 442, 444, 449 to 451?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, and a second by Wes, all in favor of approving those appeals. That is unanimous. Is there a motion to deny out-of-district appeals, 437 to 440, 443, 445 to 448, 452 to 465, 467 to 470, 472, and 474?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Tom, and a second by Wes, all in favor. That is unanimous. Is there a motion to...
There is a motion to adjourn.
By Darla. Second by, by Lindsey, all in favor. That's unanimous.